Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Victorville City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am Marshall Haprov with the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District, and it is my honor to be your moderator. This is one of four candidate forums, and the candidates were divided into their respective groups using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate, and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponent answers the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. We will finish up with closing statements, again with one minute for each candidate. Each of you participating in this forum has the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt another candidate's time or disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum, and we'll publish it on the Victor Valley Chambers website and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Mark Crefield, the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. Mark will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion and closing statement, he will then hold up a yellow sign. He will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will then thank you, and we will mute your microphone. I would now like to introduce three of the 22 hopefuls who are running for the Victorville City Council election and here with us today. In alphabetical order, Blanca Gomez, Ryan McCackran, Eric Negretti. Candidates Frank Kelly, Jerry Laws, and Webster Thomas were unable to participate in our forums. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which the candidates will speak was also using a blind draw. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Eric Negretti. You have one minute.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thanks to the chamber, Marshall, and Mark for having us. With the support of my wife and family, I'm running for Victorville City Council to once again serve my community. In 2014, I was elected to the Victorville City Council based on my strong commitment to public safety, dedication to a prosperous business environment, and ensuring city services were cost-effective and responsive. I'm an Air Force veteran, been out at Fort Irwin, working for the Army as a civilian program manager for the last 13 years, have a bachelor's in business administration from Loyola Marymount University and a master's in management from Troy State. My record on the council from 2014 to 2018 includes rightsizing the city's employees, benefits, retirements, removing red light cameras, settling costly lawsuits, improving the roads, and increasing public safety. Hopefully, the people will vote for Eric Negretti on November 3rd.
Thank you. Ryan McCackran, you have one minute.
Well, thank you to the Victor Valley Chamber for allowing me to be here tonight and participate in this forum. Obviously, I had served on the Victorville City Council from 2008 to 2016, served as the mayor from 2010 to 2012. Under my tenure, accomplished a lot of things, created over 1,000 jobs out of SCLA and throughout the city of Victorville, also completed the La Mason-Nesqually interchange and secured funding to ultimately build the Green Tree Extension, which is now under construction. Obviously, I'm a friend of the chamber. I've been a member of the chamber through my own small business here in Victorville for over 30 years, I think, if not longer. And I just know that I've been an advocate for business and creating jobs in the high desert, and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Gomez, you have one minute. Blanca, if you can hear me, you have one minute for opening remarks. Blanca, you're still muted?
Okay. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Opening comments, two minutes, right?
One minute.
One minute. Hi, my name is Blanca Gomez, and I'm the current city council member of the city of Victorville, and it is quite a pleasure and an honor to continue to be here in front of so vast amounts of people that I know exclude many of our disenfranchised individuals. But I'm sure that as we continue to push forth, we're going to get into the chambers, all these disenfranchised individuals, including language speakers. So that's my goal here. As a current council member, I'm asking for your vote, Blanca Gomez, 2020. Quiero que voten por Blanca 2020. Quiero que sepan que yo estoy aquí, soy su consejal, estoy aquí por siempre. Esté electo, no esté electa, quiero que usted siempre que sepa que yo voy a pelear por usted. No importa quién ni qué esté en el medio. Vote Blanca Gomez 2020. Un gusto y un placer, por favor compartan. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper, and please wrap up your answer before we are obligated to mute you. Question one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion-dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience, and education do you have that suggest Victorville's residents should trust you with their city? Ryan McCackran, you have 90 seconds. Ryan, you're still muted?
Thank you. Obviously, having been on the council for eight years previously, having seen the city through one of the worst recessions that we've ever seen, I obviously know what it's like to run a city. I know what it's like to deal with the problems and the day-to-day operations and make those tough decisions that a council member must make when they're up there. So I've got the education. I have a bachelor's degree from Arizona State University. Again, I've served on the council for eight years previously, and I've served as mayor as well. So I know what it takes to be in this position. I know what it takes to make those decisions, and I will do it again when I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Gomez, you have 90 seconds. You're still muted?
Okay. So what education? Well, I'm working on my doctoral degree in public administration, if that helps for anything. I've completed my master's during the four-year term in two years to make sure that I am advantageous to my community. Skills, I would say, I have the skills of many of the common people, many of the people who are seeking to have justice and their voices heard, people who desire is to risk and be able to be a part of a community that sometimes can be so ostracizing and disenfranchising. Lo que yo tengo es la educación. Estoy trabajando en un doctorado. Tengo una maestría en administración pública. Tengo entre los cuatro años, tengo dos años que complete eso, y quiero que sepan que yo tengo lo que tiene la común persona. Yo tengo esa responsabilidad, esa actitud, lo que se necesita para continuar representándote. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Negretti, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. It was very much one of the biggest honors of my life to have the Voters' Trust in 2014 to 2018 as a former council member. Running the city is like a multimillion-dollar corporation. The budget when I was there was around $250 million, which is much different than our neighboring cities. And so we have different considerations. But as far as skills go, been a program manager for the Army, working in multifunctional teams in different agencies at the federal, state, and local level. One of my major projects in years past was a 58,000-square-foot hangar, and currently working on a 68,000-square-foot building right now for Fort Irwin. So we're not getting any smaller out there. But easily scoping projects, understanding stakeholders, bringing people together for a common goal is something that is natural to me, also in the private sector where I was for a number of years in home building. So had a unique experience, I think, when it comes to dealing with the private sector and the government, being that I work at the federal government. So that's more than 25 years of experience, and I look forward to putting that to work for the benefit of the residents of Victorville again.
Thank you. Question two. In May 2020, the Victorville City Council accepted a public safety plan that described how it could expand its public safety levels. That plan also recommended the cost for an expanded level of service and the revenue necessary through Measure P. Have you read the Public Safety Plan, and do you support Measure P? Blanca Gomez, you have 90 seconds. Blanca, you're still muted?
Yes. So as a current council member, my duty is to read every piece of legislation that comes to the desk of those thousand pages and so much more at times 500 pages. I'm going to tell you that if you were to tell me who I'm going to vote for president or who's my senate or who's my state, I would have to tell you the ballot box, for whatever reason, has its confidentiality. And the same thing is for this. If you have not already watched the way and what I think about what's happening in the city of Victorville, I would redirect you to the city council's website and tell you that I look forward to serving the community with the best interest of what it is to have community service and our police officers to be in direct contact. And if you haven't been aware, one of my first initiatives within the first year was to get out police officers in the community, which I did. It was one day in a Starbucks where I had 10 people attend and a lot of the police officers. Quiero decirles que si ustedes me dijeran por qué voy a votar por presidente, por estado, por senado, le diría a usted que mi boleta está cerrada y esto es confidencial. Pero si no ha visto cómo pienso de lo que está sucediendo en nuestra nación, en nuestro estado, en nuestra ciudad, da recuerdo con los policías. Quiero que sepan que en mi primer año yo inicié a que los policías fueran a un Starbucks, a un café, con diez personas para que fueran más interesados en la comunidad. Y eso fue lo que yo hice, y eso es lo que continuó haciendo. Así que ustedes decideran que sin medida P va o no va a salir, y eso se lo dejo a su descripción. Lo que yo voto en mi boleta es personal, pero han visto cómo yo pienso, de acuerdo con la consejería.
Thank you. Eric Negretti, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Yes, I have read the Public Safety Plan, and I do support Measure P, absolutely. We tried to do something similar in 2017. And what I can tell folks is that, you know, anybody that lives here that calls 911 or calls for service understands how stretched we are. The last time I feel like we had the right number of public safety personnel for our population was probably in the year 2000. And since then, we've known we've experienced tremendous growth. And, I mean, the fire department is stretched thin, the police department stretched thin. And really, what I think we have with the county contracts for police services are an opportunity here to work with our neighboring cities, because, you know, if we're going to be contracting and they're going to handle this as a regional issue, I think we need to think regionally. And the high cost of public safety is a very big concern to me, because we can't have a Measure P every two years. And so basically, I think, working towards proactive policing solutions within the limited budgets we have is very important. Public safety's always been very important to me. I think it's our number-one job as council members. So on November 3rd, I hope that the community does support Measure P.
Thank you. Ryan McCackran, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I have read the Public Safety Plan and do support Measure P. But more importantly, when I was on the council, I actually not only supported public safety, but I increased the levels of public safety. I added more than 10 deputies. I added paramedic units to the fire department, and I would continue to do the same thing once elected to the city council. You don't see that from the current city council, that there's a lot of stuff that hasn't occurred in the last four years, and I'm not sure exactly why that is. But I do support Measure P. I think it allows us to add more deputies to the streets, more firefighters to our fire department, more paramedics, and that's what we need here in Victorville. We need to increase public safety, and so I'm completely in support of that and would spend that money specifically on public safety. That is one thing that concerns me about Measure P, is that the council, whoever is elected, could spend it on whatever they want. But you know and me, you have my commitment that it be spent on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing those goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council members? Eric Negretti, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Absolutely. If elected, there are some basic policy goals that I'd like to continue emphasizing going forward for the next few years, but just also setting up the city for success for years to come. One of the things, when we talk about public safety, obviously, while I was on the council, we switched from a county contract from the fire department to having our own fire department. Again, why previous councils chose to go to a county contract for 10 years, I don't know. The cost of public safety is very expensive. So being a strong proponent for public safety is not going to change. I was like that during my four years, and that would be something that would be a big focus. Now, I understand other council members have different ideas, especially when people talk about defunding the police. That's something that we don't actually have to worry about right now, because this pandemic and the decrements we've taken to the general fund have already put us backwards. And so, you know, thanks to Measure P, hopefully we'll catch up. But really, sustaining our public safety budget for the future is something that I'll be focusing on in trying to work to persuade two other council members to vote that way. And I think, for the most part, some of the great folks that I've met on the council, Jim Kennedy, Jim Cox, even Ryan McCackran, they all understand.
Thank you. Ryan McCackran, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. My message has not changed from when I was on the council before. Public safety is number one. Jobs is number two. Roads is number three. I've added a fourth one, because, again, it has not been addressed by the current city council in a way that is meaningful, and that is the homeless problem. I want to see that gone. I want to see it go away, because it is afflicting our business community in a much different way than it ever has before, and it needs to go. So I will continue to add police officers to our street, firefighters to our fire department, paramedics. And out at SCLA, I, with the help of other council members in the past, created over 1,000 jobs, and will continue to do that, because that is a resource that we have to take advantage of. We are the job hub of the entire high desert at SCLA and want to continue to make sure that we are. But addressing the homeless problem is something that just seems to have eluded the council, and it needs to be addressed, and that is a plan I have, to make sure that we get that taken care of, get our city cleaned up once and for all.
Thank you. Blanca Gomez, you have 90 seconds. Blanca, you're still muted?
So if you've been watching, the city council has already approved of eight different priorities, the priorities that would take place in 2020 to 2023, a three-year plan. And it takes a team. There's no I, and I did, I did. It's a we thing, whether you agree or disagree. What we do together always must include the we part of it, because it's very inclusive. I'm envisioning, and I continue to envision, strengthening American policy, and through that is reaching out at the forefront always, my number-one customer, the community, the stakeholder, the businessperson, the stake-seeker, not my colleagues, and counting to three, but my community members. They are the priority in my interests. En español, lo que yo estoy haciendo es fortaleciendo más la polisamericana. Tenemos ya otro ocho prioridades que tenemos como conseja. Nunca es yo, 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 nunca. Siempre es nosotros. Así que nosotros hacemos este mi número uno es la comunidad. Siempre va a ser la comunidad. No, mi colega acá, no cuenta hasta tres, cinco, no, no, no. Siempre va a ser la comunidad. Gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question four. What is your plan to deal with the homeless crisis in Victorville? Ryan McCackran, you have 90 seconds.
My plan is simple. We need to give the homeless an opportunity to get off the streets, to improve their lives, to get a job, to get into housing, to do whatever it is that they need to do. But they get that opportunity. If they don't take it, it's no longer our responsibility. So from my perspective, I've heard from the business community, I've heard from residents, I've heard from everyone. They are tired of this. They are tired of the problem that we are facing. It has gotten out of control. Again, I think that, you know, the council has tried to address this, but it's not being addressed, and it needs to be addressed. And so from my perspective, once I get on the council, that is my plan. I will offer a handup. I will do whatever I can to make sure that they have the opportunity to get out of the plight that they're in and help them get into housing, help them get into a job, whatever it is that they need to do. But if they refuse to take that opportunity, refuse to take that help, then they need to leave our city. We are not going to put up with this anymore. I have employees that come into my office scared to death on a daily basis, because I have homeless people sleeping on our patios that have done drugs the night before. I'm not going to put up with that anymore in my own business. I'm not going to put up with it anymore in the city of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Gomez, you have 90 seconds.
So yes, I'm going to tell you that homelessness is the issue. It's not the people. People have rights. They just do. So what the issue is, is we have a nation that we birthed with problems, and the problem starts with us, because we can end up being homeless for whatever situation. So what I continue to do and will continue to do is to make sure that we're redirecting the money to the services to help the homeless, not for the administration who pockets the money, who gets a lot of the cost. Watch where the money goes, and you will see of these individuals who don't have a home are literally receiving these services. We like to talk, but we don't look at the dollar itemized to see where those dollars are going. We just say we did this or that. En español, para aquellos que sepan, somos humanos, las personas que no tienen casa. Ellos tienen el derecho y la oportunidad de tener los mismos privilegios que tú y que yo. Hablemos de ellos como personas que son. Y lo que yo estoy haciendo y continuaré a hacer es dirigiendo el dinero y viendo dónde va ese dinero. No nada más a la administración que está usando ese dólar, sino que en realidad está la persona desubicada que está agarrando esos servicios. Ahí es donde nosotros tenemos que tener a contabilidad. Gracias.
Thank you. Eric Negretti, you have 90 seconds.
Well, homeless is a serious issue, and a lot of times, people don't even talk about the different categories of homeless. There's a big difference between teenage runaways, people that are temporary homeless, to chronic homelessness. Then you have other issues, mental illness and drug addiction. So quite frankly, in my experience, when we cleaned out the Mojave Riverbed, 50% of those folks accepted help. And the good news for everyone out there is that there are plenty of services with the nonprofits, churches, county, and even the city of Victorville have partnered on the Queens Motel, as an example, to provide services. And, you know, 50% are going to accept that. Those are the 50% I'm going to focus on. The folks that don't, that's a whole other conversation. So I applaud the council in the past. I applaud the county for working together to try to solve this problem. But the homeless shelter on Amerigo and Palmdale Road is where I like to spend my time donating my time and money, because those folks are their families trying to get back on their feet, and the only condition is not to be on drugs or alcohol. And so the folks, for the folks that are doing that, I'm 100% behind them, and I just pray for others that won't accept help.
Thank you. Well, thank you to all of you for your answers to our question and answer portion. We will conclude today's forum with closing remarks. We will begin with Blanca Gomez. You have one minute.
Yeah. So it's been a pleasure having this opportunity. Like, at one point, one of the elected told me, you will see a different change when you're elected into office, and you will see something totally distinct. And you know what I have. And so I am so grateful to continue to serve my community at large, the way I have been, continue to taking the risks, continue to being the voice, continue to hold accountable and have the accountability for everything that I've done in terms of helping the community become what they've become today. Voy a decirlo en español. Estoy muy agradecida. Vote Blanca Gomez 2020 para la ciudad de Victorville. Estamos juntos, y tengo la oportunidad de servirle aún hoy. Búsquenme, 760 912 3190. Blanca Gomez represents you. My cell phone number, 760 912 3190. I continue to represent you. Blanca Gomez represents you.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan McCackran, you have one minute.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and be a part of this forum. Again, Ryan McCackran, Victorville City Council, my priorities have not changed. Public safety is number one. I want to create jobs, build roads, get rid of the homeless problem that we have here in the city of Victorville. And I would appreciate and ask you for your vote on November 3rd, www.rianmccackran.com. You can learn more about me there or on my Facebook page, @rionmccackran. I just ask you to take into consideration, do you want the status quo and all the problems that we have seen on the Victorville City Council over the last four years, or do you want to make a change and get us back to what we used to be doing? And that is creating jobs, having decorum on the council, and having a vibrant place to live, work, and play in the city of Victorville. Ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Negretti, you have one minute.
I grew up here, been here since the 80s. And I see Victorville and our location here within the county as still providing immense opportunities to all types of businesses, from the small business all the way to big corporations out at the airport. For those folks who may not be from Victorville, don't understand, our airport has been developing into a world-class, multi-modal freight transportation hub. And at Buildout, Southern California Logistics Airport, we have about 20,000 jobs and provides sustainable growth for the region going into the future. And I want to be part of that. And I thank the chamber for everything that they're doing for the business community. Please vote for Eric Negretti on November 3rd, and we look forward to hopefully serving the city for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, I would like to once again thank all of the candidates for their participation in today's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once all of the Victorville City Council candidate forums have been completed. Thank you again, everyone, and Thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe and healthy.